All right, uh, let's call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty, free, and justice for all.
Totally threw me. All right, it's gonna be a small group tonight. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second to the motion.
We have a motion by, um, council member McKnight and a second by council member Sayer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, now's the time for community comment for any item that is not on the agenda. If anybody has anything to say, now's the time. Seeing none, um, let's start out with the Sheriff's Department update. Deputy Stanberg, welcome. Can you pull the microphone down to you? It's videotaped, so for all, that's perfect.
Um, just have a few things for update. Um, staffing, uh, we're coming up on shift bid soon within the Sheriff's Department. Um, I'm in a generally two-year, two-to-three-year contract, so likely, uh, I'll be staying here next year.
Good.
Uh, our night guy, Charlie Posert, um, I talked to him a little bit ago. I don't wanna set him in his ways, um, but he's been liking Carver, so we'll see where he bids next year and where he ends up. Um, he works four-ten's and he's my opposite. Um, but we bid for that usually in late October, early November, and find out where we'll be for the next calendar year. Um, some of the Sheriff's Office trainings we've been to lately, um, we have trainings about once a month. Um, our last organized training was boat and water practical, so we practiced hooking up, um, our big Ford F-150 or 250, whatever it is, to, um, our boat trailer, so that way, in case our boat or our rec services deputy isn't in, uh, everyone knows how to do that. Uh, we did the same with our ATV, so we can access any trails. Um, and then we had a firearms practical where we dealt with, um, offhand shooting and weapons malfunction. We also had an off-duty shoot, or excuse me, an on-duty shoot, um, where one of our firearms instructors is down at Scale in Jordan all day, and he plucks one of us off the road for about forty-five minutes, and we go shoot in full uniform. Um, we use the bunkers from our vehicles. Sometimes we'll use our, um, SWAT or riot helmets, and that's a little bit different than our typical training days where we can show up in, uh, jeans and a tee-shirt. So, we're doing it all in full gear. Um, looking at our calls for service from the first of the year through the end of July. The city of Carver has taken eight-hundred-and-forty-one calls so far. Let's see, there's been fifty-one Group A offenses. That means felony level. Uh, the most common are assault, theft, fraud, and then lastly, drugs. So, uh, so that's good. Uh, we've had thirteen B offenses. That's disorderly conducts, DUIs, trespassing, those types. So, they're not mis- excuse me, misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor. And then we've had three-hundred-and-ninety-two non-criminal calls. And that's where we spend most of our time, actually, which is probably good. Uh, that's suspicious activity responding to residential burglary alarms, um, or business alarms, which we really only have one that takes up most of our business alarms. We respond to fires and medicals also. Uh, and then we actually have something called miscellaneous non-criminal, which is when someone's calling about a neighbor dispute, um, an animal on the road, just something that's completely non-law enforcement-related, but they come to us for answers. As far as crime prevention, um, there's been a string of, um, robberies and burglaries in the cities, and it's been moving west. Um, so we've been doing a lot of open-door checks. Uh, it's most common at night, so Charlie will go around and weave his way through neighborhoods. If he sees an open garage door or anything, uh, suspicious, like a, um, a light on inside an unoccupied vehicle, he'll stop by, check it out, um, shut the garage door if he can, and then he'll leave a little bright orange post-it that'll hang somewhere and says, "Hey, we've been here, we shut your garage door for ya. If anything turns up missing or out of place, let us know." Uh, and then also, we do what's called directed patrol. Um, I focus during the day mostly in, uh, uh, high-traffic areas. So, when school starts up, I'll be at, well, I don't wanna give away my secrets, but, you know, uh, stop signs, pedestrian crosswalks, and then also the new construction buildings or the new construction developments, the housing developments, we've been focusing on, both Charlie and I, um, so that we don't get any thefts from, from new buildings or the new, it's like staging area in the houses. Um, any illegal dumpings, that kinda stuff, we wanna, um, try and prevent. And then also, one of the biggest things we do is just communication between, uh, myself and Charlie. It has to be all via email, because we never cross paths. And then also with the GP, the general patrol deputies, so the ones who work all the way from Carver out to Norwood. Um, we have a lot of email streams back and forth. Uh, coming up, Night to Unite. Uh, right now, Carver has ten parties. I think I'm assigned to yours, Mayor Johnson. And, uh, Charlie and I will just split 'em down the line. I made a map for us, so hopefully we'll be, uh, on time to everyone's. Uh, and then Steamboat Days is coming up in about a month. Uh, we have two extra deputies along with Charlie and I on Friday night, and four extra on Saturday, along with Charlie and I. And then I will, uh, be leading the parade Sunday. That's all I have for an update.
Any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned a business alarm. Can you elaborate? Is it an address you can give us, or is it a?
Uh, it's Fleet Farm usually.
Okay.
That's the biggest business we have that usually has alarms.
Okay.
I don't know what happens. I don't usually get 'em during the day. It's usually in the overnight hours. Um, to my knowledge, there hasn't been anything causing the alarm other than just a fluke in the system in quite some time.
Thank you. Will you be coming to Carver Bluffs tomorrow night?
That is Charlie's area.
We noted. Wasn't as highly sought after as Midtown Carver. But we have bounce houses, okay. Right, is there anything else you need from us?
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Five-point-two construction projects update. Mr. Lannis. Sure, come on up.
All right. There I am, all right. Well, good evening, um, Aaron Council. I will be giving you a brief update on the various projects, development and, uh, city projects. So, we're gonna start with the city projects, uh, and move into the development. We'll hit on each quickly and just stop me with any questions as we go. I'm gonna kinda buzz through it, uh, quickly. Most of us, you already know, um, but it might be a few, few new pieces of information here. So, the 2019 infrastructure improvements, the substantial completion is intended to be October fifteenth, so that would mean, uh, all elements of the contract substantially complete, uh, which would typically just mean cleanup and restoration, some final, final details. Uh, Sunny Ridge Drive, that one's gonna be towards the tail end here. That's, that's gonna be one of the last things completed. That would be, uh, mid-October, so that's gonna be right up to the end, uh, the Sunny Ridge Drive work. Uh, the Spring Creek Drive, that's gonna be wrapped up here at the end of August. Uh, the alley, uh, work for paving is mid-August, so that's gonna be wrapped up here soon. Uh, Elm Drive, again, also late August here. Most of that stuff's gonna be completed yet this month. And Dietrich Drive and Kerchie Hill, uh, is, is also, uh, is gonna be about wrapped up here at the end of the month. So, that was a, a big chunk of the work, but that was one of the first things that they, they went after. So, that should be wrapped up also this month. So, the majority of the work past August is gonna be, uh, Sunny Ridge Drive. Now, keep in mind, Dietrich and Kerchie will have substantial work happening after, after this month, private utility connections. So, it's not gonna be without major activities, uh, after, after August. It's going to be probably, you know, into the spring that you see major, major efforts and excavations going on as each utility, uh, as each property hooks up to the utilities.
Can I ask, when you say substantial completion, in general and specifically for Kerchie-Dietrich, does that mean paved?
Paved. So, you're gonna see paved, uh, you're gonna see curb, pavement, trails or walks as, as they're, you know, specified, and then turf. So, you'll see some turf and restoration. They might not get to, you know, certain landscape elements or any, any, um, minor things, but they'll be, they'll be pretty much wrapped up on the job.
Super.
So, so, just to be clear, so if that's all finished, but you said the individual utilities will still be underway after that? So, is it just the connection from the street to the house? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the project that I'm referring to as far as, uh, October fifteenth is, is the city project, which takes the utilities to the right-of-way line, and then they, they basically bury it and leave it.
Okay.
And then, on the other side of the right-of-way line, that individual property owner will have another backhoe that's, you know, probably, probably a little bit smaller, but they're gonna dig a hole just as deep to go down there to that same location, hook onto that line, and take it all the way into the, into the property.
Got it.
So, you'll still see major excavations, and those will be happening in October, November, into the spring. And so, I, I just didn't wanna leave it as construction work is gonna be about done in October, when all this stuff is gonna continue happening. It's just gonna be on the property owner's side, so.
Right, thank you.
Excuse me, Dan, before you jump into the next one, Larry, if you could give the council an update on the agreement work that you're working on with Josh Eckstein as it relates to the 2019 projects? What the council can expect to see over the next few weeks and months?
As the council's aware, the city made available to the property owners, basically, the Chinese menu, column A, column B, column C. You could elect to have only the main portion of the project assessed, or you could elect to have the main portion of the project assessed and the connection fees assessed, or you could elect to have the main portion of the project assessed, the connection fees, and the cost of bringing the connection, physical connection up to your house. Josh has circulated, has collected the responses from all the people. There's a few nits and a few, as always, you don't get back everything you want, but Josh and I are now in the process, actually, just today, I got the first draft of all the agreements put together. I'm gonna be sending them to Josh probably Wednesday, so he can review the backfill. Um, but we know pretty much who is doing what, and, um, we will bring those agreements through for council approval in just one fill swoop. And that might happen at the next meeting, if not, it'll happen at the first meeting in September.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, moving on, uh, just this, uh, presentation's gonna be ordered in the same form here for each project, so I tried to hit on key issues and what to expect moving forward. Traffic impacts should be really just local, local closures. So, where the work is happening, those roads are gonna be barricaded off. Uh, regional impacts, you know, if there are any other major street closures as such is, uh, not, not, uh, gonna happen moving forward here. So, we, we should be about done with that, you know, and, uh, it should be just reserved to the construction areas, um, that are actively being worked. So, um, the work will progress, as we mentioned here, Sunny Ridge Drive being the last, at last. So, a couple of pictures of, uh, the work that's ongoing out there, and, uh, these are recent pictures, if you haven't driven out there recently. Uh, there's the alley and the aggregate base for, for the street. Here's getting prepped, and some of those utilities that we're just referring to, um, that, uh, they're digging them up to the, the property line where the homes will connect on to. Twenty-eighteen storm sewer improvements here. You'll see a little figure, uh, with an A and a B on it, that, the little red B. Uh, that's the lift station that is, uh, being installed here. That lift station's being installed to consolidate lift stations, uh, basically, uh, improve the, improve the, um, operations of your, of your, um, your pumping, uh, pumping system during flood conditions. So, improve, uh, improve operations and reliability ultimately. But, uh, as far as impacts of, of this project here, I'll just kinda lay it out into the areas and timelines. The area of interest is gonna be that downtown storm sewer connection. That connects your old lift station, which is A, which is going to be deactivated, to the new one. And that, uh, it's shown here in yellow, uh, yellow or orange. That is planned to happen after Steamboat Days. And so, it was specifically kinda worked out that just don't start until after. So, um, they're just gonna hold off until after Steamboat Days, so that's ultimately the schedule on that. That will end up with a closure of Main Street, so that's gonna be, uh, closed, uh, but to through traffic, uh, for local destination traffic in that area. Uh, the blue area, uh, that's, uh, third to fourth. That's some storm sewer that's gonna be largely unimpactful to anybody but the people that it's, you know, right in front of. Um, and so that's by Casey's, and, uh, there's small, small, um, auto business in that, uh, that stretch here that is in favor of the project. So, so far, from conversations to date, they're all, uh, in support of, of what's happening or, uh, largely indifferent and understand the needs. So, uh, that's gonna be, uh, a little bit later in September, when that happens. And then, uh, at that point here, the, uh, the only thing left is to get the lift station up and operational, which would be October. So, that's how that's gonna play out. The work on Coney Road eleven, which we've spoken to each and, each of you about, is likely to be deferred until a later date at this point. So, I would say this is the, the project that's in front of us right now for, uh, wrap-up for the twenty-eighteen storm sewer project. So, any questions on any of that? These are pictures of the lift station as it was being built. This is from the fall, but that's about all that's happened because of the flood conditions, or the high-water conditions, I should say, have, uh, kept them from doing almost anything else yet this year. So, once the water drops low enough, can finish up the rest of that pipe. So, um, the lift station was done in the fall and is all ready to, uh, to continue on here and put the pumps in and such, so. Commerce Drive, uh, that one was expected for this fall. That's largely tied to the Lakeview Industries site, so, uh, ultimately, we've been trying to stay in touch with that project, make sure that, uh, the needs are being met. This one is, I would say, on schedule with consideration of the weather that's at a late spring. It's certainly pushed things back, but, uh, keeping in mind that this project was tied to Lakeview, uh, that's, it's going to be in line for their needs for, it needs, it'll, it'll open when it needs to open for Lakeview Industries. So, that's the update on that one. Um, no other lane closures other than what you really are seeing out there today. So, if you've, if you've been out there, what you're, what you've seen is what's gonna continue until it's wrapped up.
They're able to get whatever they need to get in and out of there with the current access.
What's that?
They need, they can get whatever they need to get in and out of there with the current access.
Yeah, and, and it's being coordinated directly with them. If there's any issues about having to, you know, uh, work, work directly with any major impacts for excavations, we're working with them to get them in and out. So, so you can see, pictures are sideways from my PowerPoint, so I, uh, there's a little bit of reformatting that happens when you just, you go from one version of PowerPoint to the other, however this was converted. So, these were actually straight before, but if you turn your head, but you can, you can see that, that, there's some deep excavations, and, uh, they're, these are recent pictures that basically, uh, show that the road is, uh, in a back-filled condition. The utilities are in, and it's coming up to grade here, uh, in the near future. And at that point, the only thing left is gonna be putting on the curb and pavement, so that's gonna be in the coming month or so. That, uh, we should start seeing this prepped as a, as a roadbed ready for curb. So, I don't know how that would've happened, but, uh, we're still working on this here as, uh, some of these little conversion blips come up. Um, development project updates. Uh, the Oak Tree Development, we'll start with that one. Uh, first and second, you'll see, if you've driven around there, they're paved and, you know, largely, uh, largely complete, uh, to the passerby here. The, the third addition, though, is, is in the utility phase, the utility installation. That's probably gonna get paved here, um, yet in August. And so, the third addition is gonna be, uh, online, similar to first and second soon, and, uh, ultimately, there could potentially be a fourth addition that would more likely be into 2020. So, um, at this point, no traffic impacts or anything significant to the public outside possibly a, a minor impact when they connect to Dell Green Road, which is, uh, expected to be very minimal in nature, so. Here's Oak Tree. That's, uh, road base getting ready for curb and some installation of storm sewer. Meadows at Spring Creek, of course, the streets were paved in the first edition. Uh, already, the street work that you're seeing now is the second addition, with curb and gutter expected, uh, again, in August. Um, second addition is expected to be largely wrapped up, uh, by fall of this year. So, uh, that one's plugging along quite well. Traffic impacts are expected to be fairly minimal. It's just the construction traffic coming and going. And, uh, you know, that's just gonna be the duration of the project, so we don't foresee anything major on that one. Again, the, some of the pictures are rotated, so that's, I'll have to keep working on how that's happening. But whatever the case is, here's a couple of photos of the utilities that, uh, were installed and, um, uh, the, uh, the grading work. Meridian Fields, uh, that one is expected, uh, substantial completion in the fall. Final street work and punch list work will go into next year. But the first addition, um, curb and gutter would be expected to be paved in August, weather pending. Um, you've seen a lot of work on that one, a lot of activity on Coney Road eleven. That was the one that drove the Coney Road eleven turn lane additions. Uh, second edition utility work would be happening, uh, with their idea they're gonna get as far as they can this fall. So, the main thing is the first, you're gonna see the, uh, pavements in the first edition. Second edition, you might see pavements, um, if, uh, if they can get that far. Uh, traffic impacts on eleven are expected to be, uh, well, really minimal moving forward. It's really just the traffic coming and going. Um, and then, um, Monroe will open when, when, uh, they're ready to start selling homes in the first phase. That's gonna be the driver to opening Monroe. And Meridian Fields, couple of pictures of Monroe, um, utility work going in, uh, and, uh, the finished pavement on Monroe Drive, so. Hawthorne Ridge's development here, um, expected completion summer of, uh, 2020. Timing of major components here. We'll just, we'll break this up into the north and, uh, north segment and the south segment, the green north segment, uh, the utility work has, has started here. Uh, street construction to follow, we're expecting that to be late in nineteen, early twenty. Um, some of the key items to expect is probably the biggest one is gonna be Sunny Ridge Drive. That's, that's south, south segment here. They're gonna be getting into the, uh, street when they do, um, pressure-reducing vault, and that'll be the impact that's most notable to the public outside of just the typical construction traffic coming and going into the development. So, um, that's gonna be similar to all the other developments. It's just, uh, traffic in and out, but that's one's pretty significant. In Sunny Ri- Sunny Ridge Drive, there's a big vault that would be, or big manhole that would have to be installed, so, well, um, that will be early fall. Exact timing is not yet determined. You know, notices will be out in accordance with the exact dates. So, these pictures are of the grading operation out there in some more storm sewer. Uh, looks like actually a sanitary sewer installation and the grading, uh, that's, that's hap- happening at Hawthorne. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I, I mentioned, did I say that wrong? I was referring to Hawthorne Ridge. Okay. Good, okay. All right, so anyway, there's, there's the Hawthorne Ridge grading operation and, uh, some sanitary installation. So, tied to that effort, you are all familiar with, uh, the six-street resident that was impacted when, uh, Hawthorne Ridge had a, a discharge for stormwater that, uh, that ended up coming kinda through that garage. So, the status update on that is, the resident is really leading the efforts to try and get some quotes on what she would like, uh, which would be a new garage. And so, they're, uh, basically deferring to her to say, all right, what are you thinking? How much, how much would it cost? She has her own builders involved, her own builder, a contractor for a garage, an own contractor for some, uh, grading work. So, D.R. Horton is actually, uh, reaching out to them to try and get some information back from them so that they can try and work towards an agreement. But they're kinda deferring to those quotes as a starting point to, to finish this as opposed to the alternative of, we'll go repair what she has out there. So, as you can see from the pictures, repair would be, you know, a bit of a challenge to figure out what to repair in itself. So, the, the starting point of that is gonna be getting those quotes, uh, on, on the garage. And so, I think at this point, D.R. Horton's more interested in trying to push this forward than anything. And so, that's, that's where it's, uh, at at the moment. And then the city, of course, has been looking at drainage improvements to the area, and the number-one thing is what's gonna be the solution, uh, for the garage, uh, because that would, that would kinda tie, there'll be different, different, uh, we'll say, solution options depending on whether or not that garage is gonna go away, and they're gonna regrade at a different elevation and things like that, so.
Dan, is that a conversation that's taking place right now between D.R. Horton and the property owner?
Yes, and, and we, we were involved to stay in, in touch on, on the issue. But yes, it's, it's being largely tied, uh, tied to the resident and D.R. Horton as, as a claim ultimately to D.R. Horton.
Great, thank you.
Is how that works.
And a follow-up question. The garage is not on the historic registry list, is it? Just to confirm.
Uh, Erin, do you wanna chime in on that?
Sure, so the property is within the historic district. So, uh, demolition of the garage, I think, is inevitable at this point. We have some feedback from Dan and then the contractor as well. So, demolition will happen, but any rebuild will have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, Lakeview Industries, I, I can only comment on a high level on this. I mean, we, I'll show you where they're, oh, this is really frustrating.
It's fine, it's fine.
I think I'm gonna convert these into PDF to go through them, but, so, whatever is on my image is fixed. Uh, they, I think there's a lot of conversion challenges here that we're gonna have to trace, trace back to. But, uh, whatever the case, um, again, if you turn your head, you're gonna see where Lakeview's at. The building core is up, and, uh, the site work is, is, is probably right around the corner. And so, based on that, we're, we're expecting to see a largely finished site, uh, by the end of this fall. Uh, buildings should be largely enclosed, site should be, uh, put together. Again, we just talked about Commerce Drive being there for that as well. So, you're gonna see, see most of this come together as to what, what exact time that they're gonna start bringing people into the building. I, I can't speak to that just, just at this point. But, um, as far as traffic impacts, and, you know, that's all tied to what you see out there today. No changes, so as far as what to expect, we're just gonna keep getting schedule updates, uh, from them and making sure that we're hitting our end of the deal as far as trying to keep, uh, access into them and getting a road built for them, so. Questions?
Nothing on from me. I think we all answered them while you were presenting.
Okay.
Good update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, no public hearings this evening. We're on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second to the motion.
We have a motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished, finished business, new business, nine-point-one, the senior living and multifamily housing comp- uh, concept from the CDA. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, I have two requests before you, both relating to the same project. So, first is a review of the concept plan of the CDA's project. Second is a resolution of support for the LCDA, LCDA, or the Livable Communities Demonstration Account application. I'll walk you through some details about that. I'll also note that Allison Strike from the CDA is here. Steve Dunbar is part of the project team as well. So, if you have really project-specific questions, I'll have them come up, give a little overview of the CDA, their vision for the project, and I'll walk through the information. So, some context of where we're located. The property that we're discussing tonight for the proposed project is outlined in yellow, surrounded by red arrows. So, just south of Carver Crossing, just south of Carver Station, south of Carver Elementary, directly adjacent to Jonathan Carver Parkway, west of the Copper Hills neighborhood, north of the new Oak Tree Development. And we've seen this before as a group, so I'll run through just some highlights that are important for tonight. So, the property that we're talking about tonight for the proposed project has been owned by the CDA since 2010. In 2012, the CDA submitted a concept for a single-family, a park-and-ride facility. 2013, the CDA comes in for the planned residential development of single-family homes, which then becomes Copper Hills, and the apartment building, which becomes Carver Crossing. 2013 also led to development of Carver Station. The CDA applies for the PRD, and they sell the single-family lots to Matamie, so again, becomes Copper Hills. And then two buildings are platted for future development. So, of course, Carver Station took that first-platted lot. The second is what we're talking about tonight with the concept plan. 2014, the CDA sells 2.1 acres to Ron Clark. They do construction and development of the site. 2015, Carver Crossing completes the planning process through the city. 2016, the project is constructed. Some FAQs that you might have about the property and where we are now. So, I have a site about the comprehensive plan, but it's guided for medium-density residential, which this project falls within the requirements. The property is rezoned to an R2 PRD. Again, this project meets the requirements of the PRD in the R2 zoning district. The proposal we're discussing- The proposal we're discussing tonight is a mix of independent senior, so a little bit different than Carver Ridge, which is assisted living and memory care, so independent senior and multifamily. The building pad again was plotted with Carver Crossing. And in 2015, there was a master planning process that considered development of the site. At that time, it was determined an additional 103 units could be considered. The project that we're speaking about tonight fills that void of the 103 units. So a comprehensive plan, again, outlined in yellow is the project location. You'll see it's a little bit darker than Oak Tree directly south, so it's the medium-density guidance in the comprehensive plan. And moving into some project specifics that were provided by the CDA. So this is a site plan that shows the bird's eye view of what the project would look like. Essentially, it's a mirror of Carver Crossing, so flipping it onto that outlet that exists. An additional 112 additional surface lots will be provided with 106 underground spaces that will be used for people who rent the apartments. This also shows.
What was that number for underground?
106.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it shows the general area that will go into the parking garage, general layout of the site. There's some pretty extensive buffering that's between the Oak Tree Development and the project with rebuilt structured pond and some landscaping. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And here's the layout that takes the roof off essentially. So the proposed building is a mix of efficiency, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. I'll have Allison speak to those numbers a little bit closely when she comes up. So the project is innovative because it is one building that provides space for seniors and multifamily. So the L shape of the building, the shorter side of the L or the one that is directly adjacent to Copper Hills is the senior portion. The longer that's adjacent to Oak Tree is the general occupancy section. And then the innovative approach is the center, which has shared community spaces. So there's space for a senior lounge, a community room, fitness center. So having these two groups together in the same building is a different approach than what we've seen so far in Carver. Some renderings of what the project could look like. I will reiterate that this is concept plan, so everything that we're seeing tonight is pretty subject to change as we start to get to know the project a little bit more, but a general idea of what the project could look like. And then thinking through some community outreach that we've been doing related to the project. So we held an open house on June 24th at Carver Crossing. We sent a mailer to over 500 households to invite people to come, learn more about the project, provide some feedback. We had some really meaningful feedback from a new homeowner in Oak Tree that spoke to the desire to have some additional buffering between Oak Tree and the proposed project, which the CDA was open to, will continue to work towards. So at the open house, we had five people that stopped by. Three were residents of Carver Crossing, so essentially they stopped by when they're on their way up to their units. Two community members, again, one from the new Oak Tree, the second that lives just east of Jonathan Carver Parkway. Something else to note is that the city website will be updated as this project continues to move through. So if anyone has questions, wants to keep up to date, I would encourage you to stop by. Sorry, the URL is cut off, but it's Carver County CDA, available on the city's website under Development and Construction. So that's the concept plan portion. I'm going to roll into the CDA before we, the grant, the LCDA, before we have Allison come up so she can answer questions about both. So again, the LCDA application is the Livable Communities Demonstration Account. It's a program through the Met Council and the grant is for innovative development that links housing, jobs, services, and transit. So the types of projects that the LCDA account can fund are site acquisition, demolition, public spaces, renewable energy, project design. In the CDA's application, they're looking for funding to assist with landscaping, a filtration swale for the pond, and an infiltration tank underneath the existing parking lot. So innovative in the ways that they'll capture stormwater and then the landscaping that I mentioned to create that buffer between Oak Tree and the CDA project. So through the resolution tonight, the grant application, monitoring, and reporting, if awarded, would be done by the CDA. Nothing falls to the city that's required at this point. So the resolution does not commit the city financially and it does not circumvent any planning processes. So should the project continue to move forward, they will need to go through the typical preliminary plat, final plat process. But the CDA is not a participant in the Livable Communities Local Housing Program, but the city of Carver is. So what this resolution essentially does is that it allows them to use our participation in that program to make the grant application. So it's essentially a resolution saying, hey, we know this project is happening, the CDA is working on it, we're supportive of it, not super involved at this point. Should grant funding move forward, the project move forward, it'll follow the typical planning process. So that's an overview of the concept plan and the LCDA grant application. Going to invite Allison Strike to come on up. If you want to give an overview of the CDA, the project, any of that, feel free.
Mayor and council members, thank you so much. So I'm Allison Strike. I'm the deputy director for the CDA. The mission of the CDA is to provide affordable housing opportunities and foster community and economic development. So we own and manage roughly 620 units throughout the county. And we own and manage Bluff Creek that's located in the city of Carver. And then we also do some community and economic development. We have a grant, a grant program that cities are eligible to apply for, and Carver has received both a planning and a redevelopment grant from the city. And then we're also HUD certified housing counseling agency, so we do like foreclosure prevention, pre-purchase counseling, and post-purchase counseling. So as Erin mentioned, we bought this land back in 2010 and are really excited about moving forward with this project. As she mentioned, it would be 103 units. And I have the unit breakdown if you're interested. So we are proposing in the senior side, five studios, 14 one-bedrooms, and 17 one-bedroom plus den. And then on the general occupancy side, six studios, 34 one-bedrooms, 21 two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms. So really looking at offering a mix of unit ranges for families. Making sure we get those studios in there because those are not typical and tax credit developments, so there is not a lot of studios in the county as a whole, but still having three-bedrooms to offer for some of those larger-sized families. And then pretty excited about what we want to do with those common area spaces to try to be very intentional on some programming that will bring, it's kind of the word, the phrase is intergenerational living. So really trying to bring the senior side and the general occupancy side together. Anybody have any specific questions?
Start if you guys don't mind. So thank you for the breakdown of the units. At the planning commission, you said that it's still kind of in flux. Is that still the case?
No, we're pretty, feel pretty comfortable with the unit mix now. We just, alls we did was took away some of the one-bedrooms because we wanted more three-bedrooms.
Okay.
So we feel pretty comfortable now with what we've landed on.
Good. And let's say worst-case scenario, the grant isn't awarded. Is that a deal breaker?
No. It's not, it's only about $145,000, so it's, it would be great.
Yeah.
But it would not be enough to stop us from moving forward.
Okay. I think that's it for my questions for now.
And thanks for letting us know about the change in the bedrooms. I noticed there was only two three-bedroom, and I think the product you're representing or proposing now is just a nice mix.
Yeah.
What more is required to be a good candidate for this grant? Was there something where it's public spaces? Like I got the part about being more innovative with filtering the water and possibly having that underground with parking above it and some landscaping that could also be a buffer. Was there something with public spaces?
So initially, this, the concept plan that you see up here now shows a public path and a bike rack, but, so we submitted what's called a project concept plan back in early July, and they said that would not be eligible. So we've.
Submitted to?
The Met Council. So they do a project concept plan and then they give you comment and you get to go back in for the full application, and that's due this Thursday. So in working with Steve and our architects, we've pretty much, we've requested what we feel is all the eligible costs that we can sort of apply for.
And can you speak more to, is it true that part of it is public space? Or there was kind of a listing of things?
Sure. So the Met Council would fund projects related to that. So that doesn't mean that every project has to check each one of those boxes. It's just things that they are open to funding. So this project doesn't have public space necessarily that you could, that could come if it was a private development with a park of some sort that was public. So it's an option that the Met Council could fund. This project does not specifically have it.
Okay. But I definitely see how it ties together the transit and the housing. Are there other grants that are on your radar? Are there?
I think it would depend on our financing. So we're working on, our goal would be to submit to the city by the October 17 deadline. We'll need a little bit longer than that to have all of our construction documents for the type of financing we're working on. And so it's going to depend on what the gap is. And if there's a bigger gap, then we would potentially consider going to Minnesota Housing. They have what's called their Super RFP every spring where they have additional funding. So if we can't bridge that gap on our own, then we would consider some other potential funding. But hopefully, we'll be able to move forward without that. We'll just, we'll see once we get the numbers back. Okay.
If I can, the timing of this grant is a little bit challenging with that schedule too. So grant applications are due this week. There are a couple rounds of review that the project goes through that the CDA will be told you're moving on to the next round, but funding wouldn't be until December. So as Allison just said, thinking about the October submittal, we'll continue moving forward with this project, probably without a definite answer of the grant funding at that time.
Can I just stop? When you're talking about the October deadline, is that for a?
To start the process with the city.
So for preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
That's what we're shooting for.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
We're all clear what we're talking about because I wasn't. Okay, thank you.
And then Allison, I have one more question about the floor plan layout. So I understand the first floor, how maybe the north wing would be more for that independence senior living versus going east family. Does that replicate for the second story and the third story?
Correct. So kind of like a big line right up, imaginary line right up the middle of the building.
Thank you.
I noticed in the resolution that it said that the CDA has represented that the units remain affordable for at least 15 years. So can you talk a little bit more about the CDA's intent for this?
Sure.
For this building?
So all of our, all of our properties are considered affordable. Typically, for general occupancy, the income limit is 80% of area median income.
Okay.
Which is about $75,000 for a household of four right now. And then typically on the senior sides, we go up to 100% of area median income, which is $100,000. Don't ask me about the math because it's a HUD thing why it's not $80,075, but. So that's just acknowledging to them that, and I mean, our proposed rents are well below what the Met Council requires, they require you to do 80% of area median income. So they just want to ensure for 15 years, we'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could also add, this project is a little bit different than Carver Crossing that was developed by Ron Clark and continued to be owned by Ron Clark. This project is proposed to be developed, constructed, and managed by the CDA.
Right.
So a different group than those who developed and own Carver Crossing.
Right. That's a good point. Okay, thank you. That was my only other question. I do want to make a comment. I do like the pathway design. I mean, I really like that connection from the trail along Jonathan Carver Parkway across this property, sort of tying this property in to Copper Hills to the west. I really like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think my final comment is I really like the multi-generational. That's so cool. And there are studies out there that show the benefits of that. And that's just so cool to see that being the first of its kind in the city of Carver. So really excited about that aspect. All right.
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 139-19, authorizing the CDA to apply for the Livable Communities Demonstration Grant to the Met Council.
I'll second it. Great, we have a motion by Councilmember Sayer and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the grant. Thank you. All right, 9.2, the rental facilities policy. Ms. Sonziden?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For this agenda item this evening, we will be asking you to approve the final facility rental policy and associated fees. I will be answering any additional questions that you may have. And then at the end, you will be asked to consider two motions. One to adopt the facility rental policy itself, and then the second one would be the ordinance, 06-2019, which would be the fees. In regard to the actual facilities that will be available for rental, as we have discussed in the past, the city of Carver will offer rental space in the new city hall, which is located in Carver's historic downtown area. This space will offer an ideal location for community events, business meetings, parties, small weddings, and so on. This facility includes Village Hall, which is a community space with a commercial kitchen and patio area, and it also has the Broadway Conference Room. In addition, the city has a historic church, which we are in this evening, Church by the River, located at 109 Main Street East, which will also be available going forward for smaller events. The city council did review the facility rental policy and the associated fees at some past meetings, at the July 1 regular meeting and at the July 15 work session, and provided staff direction at both of those meetings. Therefore, based on the feedback that was received at those two meetings, we are bringing back the final policy for your consideration this evening and also the fees that are associated with that. Just a couple of things that I wanted to call out that we had some significant discussions on had to do with alcohol. And in the policy, it identifies that alcohol is allowed in Village Hall, including the patio area, but it is not allowed in the Broadway Conference Room or in the Church by the River. The second thing that was also discussed, and the city council provided direction on this, had to do with when alcohol is being sold, that there would be general and liquor liability of the $1 million policy. And then if alcohol is being served, which would be not sold but being served, that there would be a requirement of general liability insurance of the $1 million policy. The other thing that we discussed had to do with the building host, which will be required whenever alcohol is either being sold or being served. And as the policy identifies, that would start at that time and it would continue until the end of the event. Just wanted to quickly run through some of the groups and fees that, again, were discussed at past meetings. And we went back and forth on a couple of different types of wording for the criteria and examples, but this is the final version. I'm not going to read through it. It's basically what we had discussed at the last meeting there. And the associated fees are listed at the bottom. So this would be for Group 1. And we had Group 2. Group 3. And Group 4. And again, that's exactly what we had discussed at the last meeting. No changes there. So I wanted to just open it up if there were any further questions at this time.
I have just a few things. So in the policy and kind of the contract portion of the policy, item 4.2 for the smoke-free facilities, do we need to specify that e-cigarettes are not permitted in there? We talk about smoke-free and tobacco-free.
The policy identifies smoke-free, and then we added the tobacco-free. And I was discussing this with some staff, and we really need to put the signage up because the rental policy is going to be signed by the rental party. But really, the attendees of the event are the ones that really need to know exactly what is allowed. So we'll really have to take a look at what type of signage we can put up so that everyone is aware of what is allowed and what is not.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, I think that the signage needs to, I think it's a common misperception that e-cigarettes are smokeless. It's water vapor. And it's not tobacco. So thereby, kind of how it's written, I feel like somebody could feel like they could skate through with that and that that would be permitted. So just as long as the signage is clear.
That's what we had discussed, and that was the exact, I think, consideration that we said, because what's in the policy is not going to be seen by all of the.
Exactly.
Guests.
Gotcha.
So yeah, we'll be, we'll have to be very conscientious of what we put on those signs. So.
The other question that I had, and I swear I don't have a ton more line by line, but in 4.7 for liabilities and deliveries, it says the city of Carver staff is not allowed to accept. allowed to accept or sign for any deliveries. And then the next line says, if a delivery is made, should we strike that and just say no deliveries and kind of stick to that? So it's about halfway through that paragraph.
I guess we could do that. It's just that they may have already talked to the rental party, and they may drop it off, and we may not notice that. That would be, I think, the reason that that's in there, but again, it would be up to your discretion how you want that worded.
Okay. Just feel like that gives leeway of like...
Madam Mayor, that one comes from me.
Oh, dear.
Well, because you can say you're not responsible for the deliveries, but the deliveries inevitably occur.
Okay.
And I just wanted it to be clear that we're not, you can't deliver to us, and if you do, we're not responsible. So they, they kind of say slightly different things.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Gotcha. Um, that's it for me from the contract.
I didn't have any questions on the contract.
Okay.
All looked extremely thorough to me.
All right. Um, the only other thing, I think, um, somebody, sorry. Who else wants to go on?
No, I just have a comment. I like the verbiage and the reference of building, of a building host. I know earlier discussions, it was kind of hard to summarize that, but I, I think that's a really, it's well, it's put in there very well.
Right. I think that was discussed at the last meeting, changing it from building monitor to building host.
Yeah.
Oh, good job. So any other questions?
I'm probably the only one. No, I'm on fees. Okay. Go ahead. Yep. Um, so in Appendix A, the fee schedule, um, the page number at the bottom of this item is, uh, 8 of 11. It's page 82 in our packet. For Group 1, it says Village Hall, and then in parentheses, it says includes Village Hall. That seems redundant.
I think it's meant to say includes kitchen and patio, because that's where it says elsewhere.
So it's the first page of, yeah, highlighted yellow.
At the top in Group 1.
Group 1, the very bottom line of Group 1.
Yes, we can make that change. So it'd be includes the kitchen and the patio.
Right. Perfect. Um, the other knit that I had, um, moving to the next page, which is page 9 of 11, for the second line from the top, Village Hall hourly, um, I think with the, the equation that we agreed to was hourly equals five hours. I think that needs to be $80 an hour so that the, the equation of the hourly times five equals daily rate math comes out.
I think 85 was what the council had decided, but you're certainly, we can, we can change that if that one, if you want that to be 80.
Okay. Maybe I don't remember that.
I vote for consistency. Because it's that same way in the other group, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I would vote for consistency then.
Why do we, how, did we, was that a comparable, and we decided to bump that up to 85 because...
There was a discussion, I know you deviated a little bit from your formula on that one.
Oh, boy.
I don't remember why.
Okay.
Thoughts? But I'm voting in for consistency.
Okay.
If it struck you again and you noticed it, because I did not notice the 85 versus the 80, so.
Well, and normally I don't notice math stuff, but it's okay.
Um...
So do I hear you saying you'd like to change that to $80 per hour?
Yes. We're on page 9 of 11. Um, so, whoops. Okay, so the other question that I had, um, the very bottom of page 9 of 11, the last four lines, the Village Hall scheduled for early entry, scheduled for late exit, non-scheduled for early entry, non-scheduled for late exit. Can you explain that to me? I don't know that I'm understanding it, and it seems like it's more expensive if you plan ahead.
Yes, and the, the reason for that, it's modeled after some other organizations and what they do, and it was just listed under miscellaneous, where we've discussed in the past, and I don't think we really went into a lot of detail. What that is, is if somebody's having an event, say like on a Saturday, and they want to schedule Friday to come in and set up and do things, and they want to schedule Sunday to clean up so they don't have to clean up after the event, if they schedule it at the time of the rental, then it's a little more expensive because we're tying that up. And if it gets down to two weeks prior and it's still available, then they, they're taking the risk, but we're giving it to them for a lesser dollar amount because it's available. So that's the philosophy behind that.
Perfect. Okay, that, that's what I needed. That makes sense. Thank you.
I agree.
Um, I think the last question that I had was the key card deposit. Um, first of all, do we only give one key card per rental?
Actually, that is something I have discussed with, um, the Public Services Director, Brian Skoak, and we're looking at what the security system will offer. Will we have keys? Will we have cards? How we're going to manage that? And so I talked with him, and he felt comfortable putting that dollar amount in there. What we end up giving the rental party is going to be determined by what we feel is necessary based on our security system.
Okay. Um, I could go either way, but it just, the key card deposit struck me a little weird considering they're already, most of these groups, putting down a deposit. Um, I certainly am in favor of the late return fee and the key card not returned, but I question if we need to have a, a key card deposit in there.
And maybe I can just elaborate on that a little bit. The key card deposit isn't, not something that was added because of this.
Right.
It was something that we've had already in the past, so we're actually holding deposits already.
Okay.
For individuals that have done rentals, and so we'll need to work through that process once the new policy is identified, and then we'll have to work through, like, returning those. These are people who do recurring meetings, and so they basically keep a key, is what we've done in the past. So mainly that's going to be for this facility right here.
Okay. Okay. Um, sorry, I said I had the last question, but for that Group 2, for the folks who have the recurring meetings, say Alcoholics Anonymous, is this fee schedule consistent with what they're paying now if they meet two Sundays a month or whatever they're already paying? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, they get one free rental.
Okay.
And then they would be looking at $10 per hour, and that's what they're paying now.
Okay. Okay. That's it for me.
I don't have any questions. I did want to comment that I think the building host at $15 an hour is a better rate based upon our previous discussion, so thank you.
All right. That's it for me. So if we have no more questions, I'll make a motion to adopt the facilities rental policy.
I'll second that.
Um, we have a motion by myself, Mayor Johnson, um, and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion?
Nope. Great.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance 06-2019, amending certain fees by the city.
Can we add as amended? As we discuss, we have a couple of changes.
Oh, as amended, sorry, as we discuss the 85 to $80. Okay. Yep.
I'll make a second to the motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKnight and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice work.
Um, communications. Ms. McKnight?
I have no updates.
Great.
Uh, next Monday is a parks meeting.
Ooh, good.
After we're starting to look at, uh, some long-term plans.
Very cool.
Concepts into plans.
Awesome. You good?
Good.
Okay. Um, tomorrow night is Night to Unite. Hopefully you all have a block party to go to, um, or planned one and have shopping to still do. Um, but that's always fun and lots of participation, and it's cool to meet your neighbors. Um, I also wanted to highlight that last, um, Monday, um, was the Gare Training, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which, um, we participated in along with some of our colleagues at other communities, um, and the school district. So specifically Brent, Vicki, Aaron, and I all participated. It was a four-hour training? Four-hour training. Um, this was something, to be clear, this was all Brent's work. This was Brent's suggestion, but it was a really good training that was put on through the League of Minnesota Cities and Brent's contacts there, um, where we talked about, um, early experiences with race, implicit and explicit bias, and kind of even kind of going down, and the last exercise was breaking it down and kind of examining what policies could demonstrate some bias within the city. Um, so it was a really eye-opening, really insightful, um, training. So kudos to Brent for helping set that up and make sure that that happens. Brent?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple items. Some of the things that are going to be coming your way in the next few meetings, um, one that we haven't really talked about a whole bunch, um, relates to the city's right-of-way management ordinance. Uh, you may have noticed, especially in, over the last month, there's been quite a bit of small utility work, and when I, excuse me, say small utilities, I mean Comcast, XL, CenterPoint, Telephone Cable, et cetera, and those companies are required to get a permit whenever they work in the right-of-way. Uh, we've found that there's been a little bit of a disconnect in that when they get the permit, there's nothing that requires them to notify residents that are adjacent to the right-of-way in the area that they're working. So for example, uh, Jaguar Communications has been doing quite a bit of work in the community. They'll get the permit from the city, uh, but when a resident or residents or neighborhood see a bunch of construction equipment and, um, kind of one of the anxiety points for folks is when they see locates, you know, the red or the orange-yellow paint in their yard. They want to know what's going on. Um, and so, uh, started working with the staff and the city attorney, what could we do to, uh, provide an extra measure of transparency, communication with residents? And so, uh, you'll be, uh, reviewing an ordinance at your next meeting on the 19th that would require as a part of the right-of-way permit process for that utility to contact, uh, property owners that are adjacent to their work, uh, with a description of their project, a contact name, and a contact phone number, um, so that we can at least, uh, provide some, um, avenues for them to reach out to folks on finding out what that is, uh, because frank, frankly, um, these projects are somewhat confused, or sometimes confused with city projects, and so we want to make sure that, uh, the utilities and their contractors are meeting the same standards that we hold when we do our own projects in the community. So, um, looking forward to bringing that to you. Uh, at your next work session, we'll have the first draft of the 2020 budget, so really going to be kicking off into that. Um, and we're tying up a few loose ends, but one of the, the conversations that the council, uh, wanted to have and, uh, designated through the strategic planning process was to look at franchise fees and look at what neighboring communities charge for franchise fees, those revenue sources. Uh, we're, and we're also going to deliver that, um, in collaboration with the city's five-year plan for street maintenance. So that's one of the areas, should you choose, um, to move forward with franchise fees. We wanted to not just say, hey, we're gonna, if you chose to collect franchise fees or impose those on utilities, it would just be an undesigned amount. We wanted to try to link it and give you a better context for having that conversation. So, uh, Brian Skoak and Dan Lannas have been working on what would amount to be the, uh, the city's five-year plan for street maintenance so that you can have a conversation on, um, pros and cons of franchise fees, along with a, one of many possible uses for those franchise fees. And then if I could have, Vicki, if you could bring up that slide. So, as we get closer to the opening of the new city hall, um, Wold prepared a dedication plaque, um, and I wanted to bring this, understanding that you haven't had a lot of time to look at it, but with some of the, the scheduling events that are occurring over the next few weeks, I wanted to get some feedback from the, the council. There are plenty of ways to do this, and I should note, um, been trying to work with schedules. We've moved this dedication date around. We're targeting Wednesday, September 4th. Does that fit with everyone's schedules?
Yes.
This year?
Finally.
I think so.
So I'll send out another calendar invite for that. Um, so what we're, and just a little kind of a brief overview on the, the schedule. So we're planning for your first council meeting to be on Tuesday, September 3rd. The, uh, Labor Day is on the 2nd. Um, we believe that, uh, we're going to be ready to kind of start a slow, kind of move into the new building on Tuesday, September 20th, which is the day after your next council meeting.
August.
Excuse me. What did I say?
September.
It's September. It's okay.
Tuesday must have been the formatting on the PowerPoint. It's always the city engineers' fault. Tuesday, August 20th. And so, you know, a slow transition, transition as we try to find, um, finishing plans for connecting to our cloud system, our phones, et cetera, and we're going to really start advertising that city hall, you can open for business on Monday, August 26th.
Okay.
So that gives us enough runway should we encounter some unforeseen problems in that transition. The elevator folks were working in earnest today on the elevator, and that's been a challenge. Furniture showed up today, and they've started, um, assembling that, and it's kind of, Aaron told me about, I took a look, uh, later this afternoon, but they have sketches of what each room should look like, so you can kind of see some of that physical space coming together for how it'd be used. So some key dates, but I, I digress and get back to the dedication plaque. Um, I wanted to get feedback from the council before we moved forward. This is typically made out of bronze, it'd be near the front door of the building. If there's additional names or, or groups, uh, the mayor and I have also talked about having an additional, uh, plaque in Village Hall recognizing and kind of an ode to, uh, volunteers and groups that kind of work within the community. This is a more project-specific plaque.
We're recognizing Mike Webb and Cindy Monroe. I know they pushed really hard for this project.
And then Wold Architects Engineers, is that who was, I wasn't involved, that was the design?
Yeah, so Wold Architects and Engineers did the design, the final design for the, the building. And typically you'd have on a dedication plaque, you'll find the architects and then the construction or a construction management company.
And I might be off on my ears, but when did, and I think it's such a great example, too, of something that initially was brought to the council from staff, and it's several, several small decisions, you know, led up to what we're about to move into. Um, is it 2016 or when? When did we start? Is there, I just, because I see, uh, Mr. Wegland here, was, was that Carrie Newhouse and Jim Wegland days?
So the, the initial, um, concept, the, kind of what I'd call the conceptual design, which was performed by Lee Roy Daily. Jim Weggen and Carrie Newhouse were on that council when that group was brought in, and from that concept, the, the council made kind of a series of choices, namely to construct on the existing site, and that's when Wold was brought in, um, to do the work on the site that you see today.
So the four, four turning into five concept areas?
Mm-hmm.
That was early on in my first, my first term on council.
Okay.
So, um, that would have been...
Like, when the vote came in front of the council, I, I just wasn't really sure who, who were, who was in the seats.
Yeah, it was 2016. Um, so I really like the plaque that's in Carver Station. I assume that this is going to be pretty similar. Um, and I'm good with this. We didn't mention, so the one in Carver Station talks about the project partners, but it recognizes more like the CDA and the Carver County Board and all that, all the cooks that were in that kitchen, if you will, um, but doesn't mention architects and construction management. Do you have any insight on, as to why they weren't included on that? If you remember, totally putting you on the spot.
Um, I believe there was some maybe angst with the engineering firm, so I'll leave it at that. it at that.
Okay.
So in that case, Stantec was the city's engineer, but also served as the architect, and there was...the project had to...was rebid.
Oh, that's right, okay.
But the...any more than I would just be purely editorial on my behalf, so.
Okay.
Same process, though, we used as we had the draft, presented it to the council and said...
Right.
There we go.
Okay.
So we can...we can add, we can take out, or add whatever you'd like to its...
I would halfway...I don't know, I don't...I feel like we should strike.
The architects?
The architects and the engineer.
I don't have enough familiarity with building plaques.
Should we add our outside council? I was joking.
Um, yeah, I just feel like for consistency.
For what the residents are...might want to be reminded of, I don't know that...or, you know, kind of what's...
Yeah. I don't know that that's a...
What's going to resonate?
Because I probably don't want to be reminded.
Right, right.
I don't feel super strongly on that, so I can be fine with it as-is.
I don't feel super strongly either, but if I had to pick, I would strike those, the contract names. Very happy with the work, but just to keep it a little more simple.
I don't feel strongly either way.
Okay. So I think we're good with keeping it as-is then?
I'm okay with keeping it as-is.
Yes, because I don't want to do anything that would delay it either, so that might just be enough reason.
I know, it looks nice.
Mm-hmm. I think we're good with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's it?
Oh, no.
I also wanted to mention, so we initial...also, there was two pieces that we had scheduled for tonight that we delayed. One, as it relates to, we were going to have, I'm drawing, the Leatherman Group, which specializes in community surveys. They initially had planned to come out on the 5th. They had a conflict, and then it, you know, so happened that we have some folks missing tonight, and so we've rescheduled them to September. And then Southwest Transit was initially going to come out and talk about their prime MD service, and Aaron Smith and Matt Faiton with Southwest Transit are going to be working together on that, so we'll schedule them to come out either, was it August or later on in August or September. They're not initiating that service until October, so we have some time to have the council review and decide if you want to implement that service in Carver, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Right.
All right.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
A motion by Councilmember Sayer and a second by Councilmember McKnight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night.